We'll go to written letter from the ICAH, how do you respond? I don't think I see anybody, so... Is there anything in there for working, Ovi?
Was it five year loan on the house? Don't move, once you move, you have to pay it back.
Yeah, that's...
That's part of the home. How are you doing?
Good.
Is this for special?
Honored, yes.
Well, we have a right to resolution from ICAH reviews and stuff, but we don't have like a 20-year agreement for like ICAH home, so we have to accept some of that. So if I need to send them...
Scott? We'll just have you do it right now.
Yeah, because I messed up, I looked back at your letter and your letter does say 1:45.
I looked at it twice and I thought, boy, did I screw up something.
No, but then I worked it, so I have two letters in my computer, one that says Fair and one that says Egg, and the one that says Fair says 10 o'clock, so I don't know if Bo could set it up, I don't know what happened.
The only one I seen was the 1:45.
Yeah, so sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. I'm sorry I missed you guys. Okay, I guess we got same old same old.
Do you?
Grandstand.
Yep.
You know the drill.
Yep.
I think, I don't know if everybody's seen these or not.
Yeah, we see who, are you coming with that?
Yes.
Still working on it.
Still working on it.
We got, we're getting, we're real close to getting a pamphlet made out so that we can go around and start raising money on it. I should check to see how much money we got right now, because I know the last two years of your money, we've put in account for that. And we've got some other stuff in there, so I'm really not 100% sure how much we got in there yet. But it ain't enough to start, of course. Yeah, right now, the guys we're working with, we can keep frame structure and the roof. Basically, we're gonna get the inside, all that's good. They said we had a structural engineer go through and check it all and everything. There are a couple of the things that need a little bit sprucing up, but...
Just gonna put new tin on top of it?
Yep. They said keeping the roof is gonna save, I think, $700,000 maybe, something like that.
I remember one time you said that the roof was just wasn't much of a building.
Yeah, yeah, it's 1.7 without the roof and I think 2. something that they put in the roof on. It's crazy. When I started this five years ago, this was a half million dollar project with the roof.
What didn't you do with that?
I know, didn't have any money then, that was worse.
Got any money now?
A little bit, but not enough, not enough.
Yeah, you've got a little money.
See, now you're mixing that with, no, I can't do that. Got stuff to buy. But, yeah, last year Fair was good. I guess, um, we went out during Fair, yeah, we partnered with the food pantry and we took five carloads food to them with $1,500 cash. I don't have all the numbers for what we did on the fair. It was a profitable fair. We had 15 races last year, we went through about $100,000 in that. So, um, yeah, just a few different things, I guess, we did during the fair and everything. This year should be a little bit better even, so...
You got anything in the works to utilize the grandstand more than what you do now?
That's the problem, for the way the grandstand is set up now, we can only do so much with it.
Right.
Right now, we're, I think we're gonna partner with the Y, they're having a, they're gonna try to do a two-day barbecue cook-up. We're working on that, getting that going, we're gonna use the grounds for that. Got a few other things going on this year at the Y. That's been one of my things, is we've got all this space and all this, and we use it one week out of the year during races. But the new grandstand, of course, that will be set up so we can have concerts in there and do a few other things with it. So, I know I said last year that at the end of the race season we do it, well, hopefully next year we will. But I just keep throwing you guys money in the account. And we're pretty much sustaining the rest.
Creating a way to get more parking over there.
You know, we got in with Don down there and he gave us that ground down below. And so far, that's still good, I don't, I think we might just use that mainly for parking at this time. We was gonna put cam and rounds and all this stuff and, yeah. And that's been working good. We've got a few other things in the works once we get all this rolling for parking. But there's just not a lot of room.
I got a problem with, I got a constituent that lives on that road behind the fairgrounds.
Okay.
And he's got a complaint about parking on the road because he can't get home.
Yeah.
They park so tight, he goes, we can't get home.
It's a one-way traffic, you know, we got that tractor to run around and pick people up down below, it's hard to get that through there. I don't know if, I think, I talked to Bo one year about if we put, you know, like they do on the city streets, put no parking signs on one side, and that way you just got parking on one side. Because we did have a few complaints last year. And it was tight in there, but...
Because he asked me and I asked Doug, and Doug, they don't really know who's...
They say...
They go, we moved the snow, but does the city, they don't, they haven't figured out who's responsible for it yet. I said, well, just put a sign up and the cops can take care of it.
I think the first year we did it, Bo said, well, I'm not sure if I can do that. Because he wasn't sure if it was city ground or what it was, so...
It's gotta be somebody's fault.
Yeah.
If not, it's private, it's fairgrounds, you take care of it.
There is, there is a new parking spot factor I'm gonna work on this year. Right there, ah, can't name her name right now. The house right on the corner.
Well, I could tell you. I just know, because there's some gate back there that people park in, so they move through the gate and it's a shortcut to the racetrack.
Mm, okay.
And they were wondering if you just shut that gate then too, so then you can't get through, it's why park back there.
Yeah.
Which is another way of stopping it.
That's true, that's true.
Well, I...
Yeah, we don't let anybody drive through that back gate. That's where they come back to get, come into the grandstands, during all the grandstand events.
Because one landlord told me, he goes, maybe we can just block that gate and make, there's no sense of parking.
Yeah.
You'll park in the front because it's closer.
You'll have to park up there to come around. Probably make the vendors and everybody else happy too, because it'd get everybody coming through the whole fairgrounds to get down to it. We'll work on it, we got a meeting Sunday. We'll still be fresh, but we should get it hopefully. So, yeah, because I know we did have problems last year. But I don't matter, there's one or two people that's complaining, and it was tight in there. It is every year, but... And if we can get, if we get the parking more down by the O'Colligan building down...
Yeah, you can come in that way then.
You know, we can block that road there too. Coming from the Colligan building down by Donnie's place. Because that's, that's actually not a road, that's all our ground. Wonder if we just block that road, you really couldn't block the other side, though, huh?
No.
We'll have to work on that.
You can't block when people get home?
Yeah, you gotta keep something for them guys to go around. Because during the big races, we block it on that end, on the hospital side. And that way, they got it when on the other way. Because we park all the haulers and everything else in there in the big races and... And it's just a safety thing, because there's too much going on, you don't want cars driving through there too, so...
Well, they can always get through the fairgrounds to get off, couldn't they?
No, not really.
You gotta go by Colligan or you gotta turn up to the house?
Well, you either gotta go, yeah, through Colligan or you have to go around that back way.
Go the back.
And that's what we do during the big races, we make them go around the back way, which, yeah, front tires are going around and around. There was a few that complained when we did that. They said there's just so much chaos right in there, we just figured it'd just better avoid issues.
They're gonna make you pay out.
Go for that, 70, 80 percent.
51.
We do know.
Yeah.
You know, they make everybody happy.
Of course, yeah, of course, me too. But anyways, we'll just do the same thing the men doing, I guess, with the funds, if that's okay with you guys. We'll just throw it in there. We got a few minor purchases that we're looking at, but nothing major. Probably the biggest one, we need our scale broke last year to weigh in the, I think, the hogs or the, or something, kind of weigh in some big scales, in fact, we're ever broke, and we gotta do one income. So, other than that, really, we're doing pretty good, really.
Are you asking for the same amount again?
Yeah, a little more.
Double or triple?
Eh, quite agreeable, yeah.
Hey, good water.
Always ask, yeah.
It's just like a lot of other things, good project.
Yeah, yeah, we've got, we've got plenty of projects. And we got a good bunch of people on there this year, I mean, we've gotten better the last couple of years.
That good?
Yeah. We were down there at the Moynihan Convention last, last week. Four years ago, it was two people going, this year it's 10. So, yeah, everybody learned quite a bit. Drink too much. Still, but, yeah.
Because right west of the Egg building, they're gonna, they're putting it in a museum or something now, or were they gonna build it right now? I seen it in the paper.
They wanna add to it, yeah.
So they'll take part of the fairground, well, they're very much for equipment anymore, is there?
No, no, equipments are down, that's where they wanna put it, is back in that grassy area. It's mainly for, it's the Iowa Racetrack Museum or something is what they're planning on housing in there, but they're gonna tie it in with that. Not a big fan, but I guess it's what they want, and they got money gifted to them. So, so they're set up pretty good, they're, I think, I think they're maybe a couple hundred thousand short, is all they are. I don't remember where they got all the money, they got seven, eight hundred thousand dollars in some way.
Jump the change.
That's nice.
Why didn't you give that for the...
That's what I said, they wanted me to donate, I said, I got other things going, so, but...
The racing part seems to be more than the egg part.
Yeah.
As far as giving funding and...
Yeah, yeah, it's doing pretty good, actually, yeah, yeah.
Always has been that way.
And this will bring in, when they get all that done, it'll actually bring in a lot more for the museum. I mean, it'll be a good thing again. I hate to lose the grassy spot, I mean, like I said, we're landlocked already, it was not a lot of room, but...
Yeah.
Yeah. We got something.
Yeah, no, keep us informed.
I will.
Yeah.
Will, okay.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you.
So what we had here is that the 30 and the 5, is that the same number?
Same thing we did, yeah. I suppose I need to get you the stuff for the 5, woman. Yeah, you got, you got, yeah. We got a new secretary working for you, she's gonna be all right.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
How you doing, getting the minutes to...
Um, yeah, has she been doing that? She's not 100% on all of her duties. Does she need to get all that to you?
They're supposed to email you the...
Okay, okay.
I guess she could, that would be great.
I've been slowly kind of telling her, and a lot of it I don't know, so, but I think once we let her know, then she'll be all right.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I will tell her that.
Don't be kept on record.
Okay.
If you ever need anything on the minutes, that will be all.
Perfect.
You know, that's always been the, the light for years.
We've had so many, we can't, can't keep a good one there for a while, but I think, I think she's gonna be all right, I think she's gonna stick around, so...
All right.
Yeah, all right?
Thanks, sir.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Yep.
Just slow.
Take some of the dirt off, please, now, here.
I know. I know, how about you?
She wanted to text me about the car so good.
Did you get on the seat, Kelsey, or not?
I have it for a while.
And that's...
I, I, I enjoy that, that's just once a month. I'm not turning this.
No, we've gotta be careful. I'm enjoying it.
There you go, thank you.
Is that all right?
Yeah. A long time ago, but I don't think they were, I'm not sure Kelsey had it.
She's better, weirder.
She'll have to let him manage.
Oh, well, we didn't have a period, but soon he's gonna be there.
It is gonna be the, Kayla's one, it's a little thing.
And she's getting older.
YouTube agent, is that what you're on, or something?
In love.
She's a teller.
Nice.
See the hair and ears. There you can see the hair in his ears, like you did there. He's not quite old, going through a whole bunch of that yet.
You know about that?
Okay. We're gonna have teens, we didn't expect that. It's gonna have somebody joining for teens, or soon?
Just sitting back there.
Is this a while longer? Excuse me?
Oh, she is?
Yeah.
She didn't let me know.
Dana, Seth, are you here to make that same presentation?
I'm not here to make a presentation, I'm just here to support.
But, but...
You might have to make it happen. You might be more than support.
Well, that's okay, I can, yes.
We got the book here, so... You got her printout?
We got the book here.
We got the look.
Yeah, we got it too, yeah.
We got all the details.
She's gonna call, I think she called, we're gonna answer her, so we'll pick it up and she's gonna tell why she...
Hello?
Okay. There should be somebody on the line, honey, hang up.
All right.
Hello?
Yes, we're here.
Hi, this is Amy with Elder Ridge.
Yes.
And I'm located in Eastern City, and I'm just trying to help out my CEO, get connected with you today for 1:45 time.
Yeah.
Uh, can I rock, can I drop you into a conference room and then I can get her on the line? Is that okay, or?
No, that's fine, that's fine.
She's having trouble with the Microsoft team.
No, that's fine, okay.
Is that, is that fine?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
All right, hold on a second.
You will now be placed into the conference. You are currently the only person in this conference.
Everybody there?
Yep, we're here.
Okay, uh, just a second here, I'm gonna pull out of the conference room and I'll get her.
Do y'all wanna stay in the dark or should I turn the lights back on?
We can do it here, but thank you.
Can I come up so I can hear it?
Sure.
We're having a dance.
Hey, go ahead, shout it.
All right, we're here. Oh, yeah.
Good afternoon, I'm sorry, we're having technical difficulty.
That's okay.
I really wanted to, uh, I'll deceive all when I talk to you, but your Microsoft team is not letting you in.
We're such a handsome group.
Well, that's just it, I wanted to see you. But anyway, I want to thank you for letting me join you today and just talk to you a little bit about Elder Ridge. I know that most, if not all of you are aware of Elder Ridge and what we do.
Yeah.
As far as providing elder island service in our 29 county region. But just wanted to touch base, you know, we sent you our annual report, and I believe we sent you the county report page that shows the services that we provided directly to, um, folks and caregivers in your, in Cassis County. Do you have that in front of you?
Yep, yes.
Awesome. So, so I just, you know, we provide some of our services directly, and a lot of our services, we subcontract out to local community providers. So I just wanna kind of walk through some of that, and going out, like the meal program, um, the congregant meal sites at the seniors center, um, and at Divines Creek Catholic Parish, um, we support and provide those meals, as well as the home-delivered meals out of the seniors center here in Algonia. If you look at your, um, your report here, you know, we're talking up to $96,000 worth of meals provided in Cassis County last fiscal year. Um, the legal assistance, that is, we subcontract with Iowa Legal Aid. Um, and so folks that are 60 or older can contact Iowa Legal Aid and not have to pay for that legal service. Um, you know, it's things like landlord tenant issues or, um, maybe financial issues that folks can go right to legal aid and get some assistance from an attorney. Personal care service, um, personal care is, if somebody's going to the home and help with, um, you know, daily living needs, so help with the bath, maybe grooming, toilet seat, um, ambulating, and we subcontract with Cassis Regional Healthcare for that service. And you'll see that it's, um, almost 517 hours of service was provided by them last fiscal year for a total of $28,240. Um, and of course, that's one of those services that helps people stay home longer rather than going to a nursing home. Um, and then you'll see down at the bottom, services directly provided by our agency. So, we do a lot of information assistance, people call, they just have concerns or have a need, um, and just don't have answers, don't know where to go for answers, and so they can call our agency and our information assistance experts will, um, you know, help them either answer their question or direct them or connect them with other agencies that might be able to better meet that, that need. Um, we also provide counseling, um, and options to folks. So, you know, you're turning 65 and, and you're gonna retire, and you're just not sure what the next steps are, so we offer, what we call, as you said, retire, we do some educational programming about Medicare and estate planning and, um, you know, Medicare Part D, funeral planning, you know, those kinds of things so that folks know how to, how to go about doing that. Um, we also provide case management, which is a longer term, where the case manager subdoes and coordinates those services right in the person's home to help them stay home and community-based. Um, we also have seen an uptick in elder abuse, elder neglect situation. And we, we attribute some of that to, because everything, and folks were isolated, they didn't have eyes on what was going on. And so now we're, we're getting back into those homes and seeing that there, um, there are issues. And we try to help those folks make, make their life better. Ording is, and self neglect is probably our biggest thing, that we, we run into it and try to help people deal with, as well as financial exploitation, where a family member, neighbor, friend, might be taking advantage of the person financially. And in those situations, we certainly involve our department services and the county attorney. So, one of the other things we, that we need here to your counties this last year is we're doing some Iowa Return to Community. And what that is, is we're helping folks transition from the nursing, or from the hospital after our nursing homes, back to their own homes and providing those social services, we call them wraparound services. We don't provide medical, um, you know, home health provides that piece, but we provide things like, maybe they need meals for a while, maybe they need a lifeline button, maybe they don't have transportation to get to their follow-up appointment with their doctor, maybe they need some grab bars and stuff. So we will, we will help those, those for up to 90 days, um, to, to have those things so that hopefully that transition back home is successful, and they don't get that back in the hospital and the student home. So that's kind of a, a, that's the service of our, that's our questions, and then I'll have a few other things to add.
It looks like $14,369 this year?
Yeah, that is our, that is our request. Almost 30% of Cassis County population is 60 and older, um, and all of our counties are growing in age, people are living longer. Um, so there's 4,235 individuals in Cassis County that are 60 and older. We're asking for $3.10 per, um, 65 persons, so a total of $14,369. You'll see last year, you funded us at $13,137, and we extended $186,194 in services in your county. Um, but your county, of course, just to understand the significance and importance of that, our biggest funding person is the federal, federal government through the Older Americans Act. But we're trying to draw down all those federal funds. We have to provide a 25% match, and so the county support that you are giving us, we use it towards that 25% match so we can fully draw down all of those funds. Plus expand services.
I think it should be more like $20,000, shall we?
Well, is that Dan?
Yeah, I thought you were gonna meet me here.
I was, but, um, you know, we have, I was warning you here.
Okay.
So we're, we're caught up in ice, so that's why I joined this way, so I thought I should not be here. Um, but anyway, another new thing I want to tell you that we just, just did is, um, we did a Santa first seniors program there in Cassis County, um, where older individuals that might be financially... Um, where, um, older individuals that, um, might be financially, um, trapped, they might be isolated. Um, we, uh, along with a personal opportunity, reached out to community businesses. And thirty individuals were adopted by, uh, community, um, individuals or, or companies and provided with Santa first seniors gift. Um, and the, um, uh, they were provided a free meal. And so I, I see that joy first year was wonderful. Um, there, you know, the joy that those, um, give when they're delivered some gifts. And maybe they don't get anything otherwise is, is just so hard working. So, um, we did, we started that in Cassouf County to show. Any questions for me?
Nope, it's, uh, pretty self-explanatory.
Okay. Well, we, we very much appreciate your support and, and we continue to, um, do our best to meet needs in, in a very large geographic county. Um, but, um, we, um, we look forward to continuing that, that partnership. And, um, I have comments that it gives me, um, maybe someday I can just be passing through and at least that can say hi to everybody.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you very much and have a wonderful afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
She's in, uh, Spencer. I was wondering if she said ice or anything. She was over west. Yeah, there. Well, I just came to support her and let you know that, uh, it's really doing some wonderful things for our, our constituents here in, in Cassouf County. Meals on Wheels, we serve about fifty a day out of the Senior Center. And probably twenty a day of Converent Meals and people coming in. And, uh, it's, it's a situation where the, the delivery meals, the Meals on Wheels are, everybody gives something for it that isn't free, but they give kind of according to what they feel they can handle.
How does it work on a period like on radio that no Meals on Wheels today because of the weather? How do you, if you're expecting to eat Meals on Wheels every day, what do you pretend to do today?
Well.
That's why I lost on that one.
All the, uh, receivers of Meals on Wheels are aware that that can happen. See, because we've got, excuse me, volunteers delivering these meals. And of course, if it's really nasty out and dangerous, we don't want those people out. Uh, yeah, we've got a driver that takes meals to Whitmore and, uh, we don't want him on the road either. So we kind of go by what the school district does.
There's no schools.
Yeah, yeah. And some of the, some of the folks get a cold meal on the weekends too.
They get it on Friday?
Yeah.
Then they just eat it on Saturday or something.
Yeah, it's a sack, sack. Now maybe a, a sandwich and a fruit and that kind of thing. So. But, uh, I'll tell you, there's, there's people in town that are living it alone in their home. And it's a lifesaver for them because they're getting a family's meal. And it's warm, it's delivered warm. So I just wanted to support whatever they were asking.
Yep, thanks Dan. All right.
Thank you.
Take care.
Well, sir.
You're done, you're up.
Am I up? This young lady is here before us. Oh, she's observing.
She's just here observing.
Oh, well, there we go. Here I thought she was going next.
What?
Afraid of.
What's that?
Afraid of Carter's money. If y'all would like to have one of these.
That's true.
And you're welcome.
I'm involved with this too.
That's right. Now should I leave something for the thugs that aren't here?
Yeah, take care. Have a Merry Christmas.
You too.
Merry Christmas to you all.
Merry Christmas, thank you.
One for you. One for you. You even got one for you too.
Thank you, Dawn.
Hey.
Thank you.
All right. So I will make it quick and you realize I've gotten quicker every year. I hope y'all realize I don't try to tell the whole story anymore. But for you new fellows, and of course Carter, I know you and I work with your mom, so I don't know if you realize that I know you too. So I'm Dawn Bernhard and I am the RSVP director for the Northwest Iowa. So we're five counties, but I'm also the coordinator here in Cassouf County and I base in Cassouf County. And so my office is up at Iowa Lakes. And RSVP is an America or federal grant program. Okay. And we, the mission is to place volunteers who are fifty-five and older in meaningful community service. So we partner with nonprofits, really anybody that's a not-for-profit business, we can partner with. So we're really active in the schools and it's funny since COVID, the school connections that we have with our volunteers has really grown. So we have always done the PNPaw program. I know you've heard me talk about that. And that's where volunteers match with one student. And over about three months, they exchange letters and then at the very end they meet in person. And it's wonderful social. So it's, it's a social advantage for the volunteers, especially during Iowa winters. They look forward to a letter in their mailbox. They get to write a letter back to their students. So we've always looked at it from the health and benefits of the volunteers that are active in that program. But what we have found out, especially after the pandemic, the teachers say that a lot of the students need that social connection. And they need that intergenerational connection because some of them don't have anybody that's kind of a grandparent figure. And we expanded it several years ago into Fenton and Sway City Schools too. So we do all the Cassouf County schools. And just as a figure, I'm going to get off track a little bit, but last fiscal year, we served two thousand nine hundred and ninety-five students directly in our five county area. So we hit all of the, um, third or fourth grade students in Cassouf County specifically. So that's PNPaw's. Um, and the teachers are telling us in fourth grade, when the students have their auto test of basic skills, one of the things they have to do is write a letter in that. And most kids have not ever seen an envelope, addressed an envelope, put on a stamp. And so I don't know if you know Mrs. Broon, two teachers, fourth grade at Fenton. And she was so excited after the first year. She said, our students smoked. They had really high scores and made an impression from the state perspective. And it's just because they've been part of the RSVP program. So even if we do it with third grade, here in Algonia with Garrigan and the public schools, we are in third grade. But those students next year, when they test their Iowa test of basics, they still remember. So there are lots of different advantages. And so that's one of the things we do. And the other thing that we have really expanded, especially here in Algonia, we have volunteers that go in as reading buddies. And so everybody heard about the education lag that some students experienced, especially during that COVID time. And so there's some students that they just could have a little extra help that will bring them up to grade level or at least keep them advancing as they are in third or fourth or whatever grade they're in. So we now have volunteers that go in and we have them in kindergarten, we have them first grade, third grade and fourth grade in various schools around the county. And it, it helps because those volunteers sit one-on-one. And sometimes those students are instructed by the teacher to read aloud, but sometimes that volunteer is actually helping them sound out words and learning grammar and some of that kind of thing. So really we think that there's a lot of advantage to not only the people that live in Cassouf County that are volunteers, but the schools and students and others that we're with. So if you can see our last fiscal year, we did about forty-three hundred dollars, forty-three hundred hours, excuse me, of service in Cassouf County. That's only what volunteers will actually turn in and we can report in our grant reports. So I'm sure there's quite a bit more. And I thought if you would like an interesting breakdown, so for Garrigan, we did about a hundred and fifty to two hundred hours. We have volunteers at Exceptional Treasures that help that store stay open. We did, um, almost six hundred and fifty hours at the care team. So we have volunteers that are supporting care team. We had seven hundred and seventy-six hours at the food pantry. RSVP volunteers are helping with that. Um, the Historical Society, Cassouf Regional Health Center, uh, Lucia Wallace with third grade and the reading buddies. We did almost three hundred and fifty hours there. And Cassouf County in general. So that's everything from the Cassouf Concert Series to Extension to County Fair. Um, different activities that happened, we did right at thirteen hundred hours. So, um, we feel like we're, as far as what the volunteers contribute to our county, we, we think it's pretty important. And I'm just gonna, I don't mean that Dan's already gone, but piggyback, we have a lot of RSVP volunteers also are delivering Meals on Wheels. And we do a couple other Elder Bridge. We partner with them in several of our counties, of the five counties and help with Meals on Wheels and some other services they, that they do. And they also, um, often have meetings or when they were talking about the ready, set, retire. Sometimes because of RSVP's connection, we host them out at the, um, Algonia campus and they can come and use our facilities for their meetings. So we feel like we are pretty strong in partnership. And I don't know if anybody's got any other questions. We have asked in the past for two thousand and we would certainly hope that you could continue that. Uh, we would love twenty-five hundred or three thousand if possible, but, and just like, um, Shelley was saying for Elder Bridge, we also have a match requirement. So we have our federal grant and we have a match requirement and that's what you help when you fund us. But the other thing is I use all the money that comes from the supervisors only in Cassouf County. And it is going a long way in our PNPaw programs. We provide the stamps and envelopes to all the students that write the letters. The volunteers don't get any of that, but the schools do. And so it helps us expand and keep those programs going. One of the things that happens. So we say, hooray RSVP volunteers, and we hope that you find that we have an advantage and some benefit for the county. And I would entertain any questions. Anybody have any questions? Do what we can, right? It's fun. It's fun. And every day's different. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate the chance to be here. Am I the last one? Was that it?
No, we don't.
One more.
What's kind of good to do last, then you'll be the one that, that everybody's going to remember. When you walk out of the room. So yours.
Well, I think it's from the paper.
There's not one of you, I think it's Steve Gordon. How it works and, um, how it works. Just basically helps. Okay, great, great. But on December, we would have half an inch rain or more. I know, no tornado, which we lost a whole fence in that winter last year because it needed to be replaced, but.
Gotta force your hand on that one.
Okay, we'll do that now instead of sometime in the future. It's just so odd to, to not train it. But I do have, I have a coordinator in Spencer this morning. She said, I don't know if I can get any more because they were having quite a bit of ice over there this morning.
Well, Kaylee texted me, yours just says there are a hot bit. Can you come over? Yours just said a little ice down here. So maybe it's, I don't know.
Well, I'd heard that around noon, they thought that we were going to start drawing temperatures and so whatever is here. But when I came in, it was just raining.
Sure. Yeah, well, that's why I drove around town a little bit.
Where goes on the weather channels?
The, what, the time's supposed to raise.
Right.
Through midnight.
And that's all right.
Until like thirty-eight and then I don't think it's supposed to drop until tomorrow afternoon.
Oh, and we drop and we, yeah, Saturday's time's going to be eleven degrees or something. Oh, it is definitely.
It's supposed to get a couple inches of snow Thursday. And we're not supposed to get really anything for presentation tomorrow. It's supposed to drop.
So y'all will be seated in January. Is that what? Obviously you've got a notebook, so you're kind of in a training.
Well, just so I mean, we all thrown in for.
But you should.
Right.
Exciting?
Yeah.
Overwhelming?
See only.
Yeah. Someone's going and joining each other. And what is right and what is wrong? And what's this regulation? What's that regulation?
Yeah.
Oh, I just hear a little bit on the radio, not too much about carbon pipeline.
Yeah.
But an ordinance is being directed by the supervisors to try and kind of keep that loose. Well, if anyone else to know my stance on that, I will share, share.
I talked to Steve about it a little bit one day.
It is not coming.
It's not, it's not going through our original.
Yes, it was going to go through the South.
But it's not going through there.
No, tip, uh, Dean Frieder's ground.
Yeah, because I think that's when I talked to Steve was, when neighbors still thinking about going through that South End of yours.
Well, sometimes I just find the most interesting thing is that these are for-profit companies that want to come in and, and take. I want eminent domain to do something that is for their pocket. It maybe isn't helping everybody else.
I know.
So. And then you know, what was it yesterday or the day before that Keystone Pipeline struck? It's, um, it has a leak in Kansas and something to the tune of sixty thousand gallons of oil that are leaked into a creek. And they're talking about what a major cleanup that's going to be. And that always seems to be a safer, I mean, if you're thinking about what is safe, compressed carbon exploding or oil going through. And still, things happen.
Yep, yep.
Well, that's the EPA is already in with Kansas. And I'm not exactly sure what in Kansas it is, but they were talking about the cleanup. And essentially the creek, they will take every rock and stone, cabbages creek, clean it and return it. And they talk about the long, how long a process that is to actually get it cleaned up. You think, oh, you can't really wrap your mind.
Kids just turn the creek off.
They don't think that'll work. I was supposed to get back to work.
First thing they did.
Tell Steve why.
I'll do that.
I haven't seen him for a while.
Say, okay, like.
I will.
And then they called their lady.
But I don't get to. We're close.
I know.
I don't get there that often.
Yeah. Yeah. Not too much goes on.
That's good. That's good. We got to keep our little towns a fire.
That's right.
Big towns, little towns.
Yeah, yeah. I, you know, I was going around town, I didn't realize, I knew Jason brought a plant, a plant of luxury. I said it then on the west side.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. And now the orchard's not his. That's Brad Tiltz. And he lives, he, and I, I, they partner on some things, but Brad's the one that's planted them and he maintains them. You know, does all the mulching and things. And if you haven't been lately, sometime about midsummer, he put up some little fun signs. And he's seen those. Yes, I think that's.
Oh, I just assumed April did that.
No, no, that's a Brad thing. And originally when he was talking about doing that, he was going to make it a, you come and pick.
Yeah.
And I presume I haven't really listened to his sense, but he has really done. It looks great and all those, all those frich trees, sort of peaches and apples and cherries. So the last thing is Jason has recently purchased the hall.
I only bought theirs all there because there's a piano on there that they wanted.
Oh, that's old as my.
Well, there's two of them in there. The one I don't buy a lot at all. Yep, but the one that was in the church.
Yes.
That one's good, yeah.
Okay.
So I don't.
Well, we kept it maintained even when the church was still there. You know, because it was regularly serviced.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm the last one that did that. But, uh, yeah, so I don't know. I did a couple things. I don't want to shock my people to take it off.
Now you're still doing your, not only you're still doing your tuning business, but you're talking about doing some refurbishing and things up.
Yep, I have.
And you're still actively doing that?
Just got to port a new floor and shop. And so I got it all organized and set up for the first time in eight years. So.
So it just makes me think of, yeah, it makes me think, you know, Glenn Hendrix.
Oh, yeah.
He's a PNPaw for artists.
Well, I'm sure, you know.
Oh, he's a great connection.
Good guy, good guy. All the shop stuff is going good. Like a whole library. Like a whole library from family right now, I live here in Ogle, actually.
Nice.
The last one was from Chicago. I got two inspectors, sure do.
Now, if you could just start on one and go to the end, get it done, how long would it take you to?
Sounds like what they're all wanting me to do to it. Like the one from Chicago, that was a year-long project. But this one, I started November seventh. I probably two weeks away from being done. I'll just say two months, you know, until I'm from the time I started. Yeah, so that that was just. I had cracks and soundboard effects and restringing and the new camera on actors.
So when you actually. Find a new soundboard or replace it?
No, because you can't, you can't just order a new soundboard, especially for a nineteen oh four piano.
Well, I didn't know if you have access to old ones.
Right, right.
Part, part them out.
Well, and soundboard is not really something you can part out because it's, it's so attached to move in there and there's a part of the frame of the piano. They sell, let's say, you get on shims, cordos that are V-shaped, they're just real thin. And so I widen the. I widen the crack that's there.
We'll be moving holidays coming shortly.
I mean, you. You move the shim, you tap it in to the crack, what fits in a V. And then when they all dry, you, you use the, uh, whatever you call it, a planer, yeah. A planer to smooth it out and then sand it off. All you trade the soundboard, all finish off and sand it lightly. And then relayer it.
It's a process.
It is a process, yeah. But everyone I do, it seems to go a little faster and seem like I know what I'm doing closely.
Well, they always say you wish you could do the second one first.
Right. Uh, it's all right, yeah. But the last one, you know, three weeks. Was way more than I ever done. You know, the pin block, you know, the whole. I had to cut it, make the whole new pin block and drill all the holes and then exactly the right spots, the plate, the half-time plate, go right. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Well, you're so, Merry Christmas, everybody.
That's a whole year away.
No, it's February.
So that's all we're gonna do until February first.
I was gonna say.
It didn't January, come back March, it was more than three weeks.
They're gonna be gone in one, two, three weeks.
That's where you went last second.
Your kidneys been before, I'm missing three.
What's a good supervisor who thinks needs a bit of meetings?
It is. It's a good one that saved it, we didn't have it here.
Trust me, this is full-time. You guys can worry about this on your own.
Who's here? Our last went today.
Awesome. Came just a little bit early, just in case you were.
Uh, we can't start till two thirty, we got it on you again.
I put time signs.
Okay.
I'll show you something, sir.
Sure.
I was in Mason Pleasant, I can't keep on Friday, but Saturday I was in Mills. Box of fire.
I think it's a travel agent, sir. Christmas, Christmas.
What?
Four ten shells you can't find. I've never seen such a thing.
I'm a shit, I'm like right down below, there's other twenty-eight shells for, you know, normal price, not like.
Four bucks a shell for these? What's so special about this federal premium? You know, it's interesting.
I looked, I said, hey, four ten, I want to grab some. And I looked down and like, she's like, wait, you taking? No, I think.
Just because of the.
I did find some forty-five buck, fifty-six bucks a box.
If I'm north to. Yeah, we usually do that.
Except one box. Fourteen bucks a box.
Okay. Everybody was kind of coming back down.
Two bucks over the ones I got. We got some.
Yeah, laser ones.
Yeah. Click factor later.
They're gonna go back, made batteries.
They're clean.
They're pretty. Thirty-eight bucks for a box of five.
No, thank you.
Tammy, did I lay a sheet on your desk?
I'm not a good enough shot anymore to buy them.
Only three of you at the desk this afternoon?
Ted, I don't have to be here, but if I was in here, the guys couldn't be doing this.
Yeah.
Wouldn't have a forum. So the other two are obviously gone.
Somebody decided to take off on vacation yesterday, not tell anybody.
I'd, I'd go on vacation, but I don't know what it means.
Means vacate.
I have one on vacation.
He took a week off, made out his bag in the hospital, that was vacate.
That was before me. That was before me.
Yeah. I don't remember it, though. I think it fed me, I'm not sure. I wouldn't recommend it.
You think so?
Nah. I didn't have a whole lot of fun.
Dan was here this morning, but he had good weekends afterwards.
I got some meeting at one o'clock. These guys ain't been sworn in yet, so I couldn't stay, I have to stay.
We don't count for nothing yet.
Carter, you know Luke?
Yeah.
So you got any questions on aerial stuff? Go in his office, he's a magician.
I try to be helpful. Try to answer things as best I can and be helpful and.
Ted, you said that the Boone Valley was done with?
Uh, so it'll be ongoing, I don't wanna say indefinitely, but I mean, it'll continue for a number of years. So we have the Boone River Watershed Coordinator and I can't remember his name off the top of my head. I haven't talked to him for a while, but. What's that?
Eamon, the river's name was?
No, Kyle Emmett. So he's with the Iowa DNR. So he's really just sort of a coordinator for the whole watershed thing. And I shouldn't say that, not for the watershed thing, but for the watershed authorities. So he's sort of a coordinator for the group of individuals that gets together. So he's more of an administrative side of that. Sean McCoy is the Boone River Watershed Manager. So he's the one that addresses farmers, helps get people interested in enrolling in practices for edge stream, bioreactors, things along those lines, so.
We're ready, Luke.
Great. Well, I'm here on behalf of the Soil and Water Conservation District to thank you for your past support, for the funds you provided for, for the district. So that's something that, that you've done two, three years now. I think we had a little break with COVID amongst everything. But those funds have allowed us to, to be more resourceful, use it for advertising both in paper, on the radio. We continue to sponsor local contests. We have other sponsorships for conservation groups that come through, like Water Rocks is one of them. It also helps us pay our dues for, for the Iowa Association. In addition, we've used some to help sponsor some of the scholarships for the Conservation District, so. Some of our ongoing projects or developing projects include the, the Stream Signage Project, and I know that's, I've talked about that in the past years, that's still sort of developing. We kind of have looked everywhere, done grant applications to, to get some offset funds to help pay for that. Through the Boone River Watershed, the signs are being taken care of within the watershed boundary down in the southeast part of the county there, so. Kyle, Kyle Emmett helped coordinate that, then he's working with Doug Miller to get those installed. So that, that part of the county is, is being taken care of from a signage. Signage on the paved bridges is basically what we're looking to do. It's not all gravel roads and, and small culverts or anything like that, so. But the Soil and Water Conservation District would, would like to ask for an allocation of five thousand dollars for the next budget year.
So this drought's kind of hard on all those fish you're trying to protect.
Pardon me?
The Topeka Shiner, you guys are trying to protect with that, down in that area, that's low water, any too much for them.
No, and they've done some, not in Cassup County, but down in Wright County, they've done some projects geared toward the Topeka Shiner. In that, the, the water flowing through the culverts has eroded on the downstream side, and so they've, they've lowered some of the culverts. They've adjusted that so the Topeka Shiner can move up this way a little bit easier.
Can shine a little better?
Apparently.
DNR should have brought all those otters back, because what do you think they're doing?
Well, they need all the Topeka Shiner.
So it's a, it's a food source then?
Yeah.
Because McCullen's oxboats, it's dry, it's got, well, size of a kiddie swimming pool.
Yeah.
It's all in that one, so it's, it's all dead.
Is it? It's all dry down there? And hopefully it's just dormant, not dead.
Like I said, the water's only about the size of a little kiddie swimming pool and it's probably froze tight now.
Okay.
So I'd say everything in there is dead.
I'll bet it is.
But that creek, when I was running Zuckner's Creek down there, beaver trapping, and there's a lot of little minnows along the dams.
Okay.
I don't know what the Topeka looks like, I need to grab one.
I, I think it looks like a minnow, so sort of one and same to me, but I'm not.
If you're, you're, what do you call it, one of your critters?
The taste of thing.
Old otter?
Yeah, an otter, yeah.
Tastes like a fish.
Three less to eat this time.
So I think our efforts have been important in helping, you know, overall, the number of, of acres in no-till, strip-till conservation practices like cover crops. It's increased through the state of Iowa. And in no small part, it's, it's part of getting the word out, helping inform farmers. So we've got a great conservation assistant that's with us, Sarah Pearson, that's, that's been key. She's a full-time staff over there now, that's been key in helping us get the information out, so we hope to continue to do that. That being said, Sarah Pearson is leaving us. She and her husband Bob farm over just kind of in between Tammy and I's location over there in Wesley Township, so she's going full-time with their practice and, and they're gonna continue to do more with organic acres and, and other things like that, so.
See the guy that takes pictures? Your dad, Hanson?
Uh, Pearson?
Yeah. Bruce. Bruce Hanson.
Didn't know that.
Okay, yeah, because those on their farm had problem with water underneath that road. So we put them hog slats in there.
Okay.
Stop the waters eroding out their fields.
Okay.
Got a lady, Donna, really nice lady.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna miss her. So right now, we're gonna work with the Humboldt County. And we're gonna have a part-time conservation assistant through them. So she's part-time with Humboldt County. Sarah is full-time with us, so it's gonna be a little bit of adjustment till we get somebody back on full-time, but.
Dog cover crop workers here, when we didn't get no rain to drill seed in the fall.
Hit and miss. The, in this case, the drill seeding worked better than the aerial seeding did. So got more ground contact and everything with it, so that, that made a difference on that. Rye oats, I think rye performed the best. I think we had somebody put in radishes again. So they used to do that up by Big Six, there was a farmer that, that used radishes as cover crops, so.
Wasn't that supposed to be better for nature then?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. There's a little more to it, though, than just a typical cover crop where you roll in and terminate it and plant through it, so. I think the radishes, you've got to, you've got to cultivate it up and then work it back into the ground, so it's a different practice, so.
There is a lot more cover crops used east of here further, you get in the karsoil over by Old Sage in that area, they're really, really going ahead compared to what we do here.
But it's increased in the past, you know, five, 10 years here, so it went from very little to, to quite a bit more. And so there's folks like Nate Boss all involved, are, are big into those practices. And so I think that helps sort of spread the word to and just get more people involved. We got Pat Maron up in the north part of the county, he's doing some more of that, so getting involved in some of the conservation practices, so. Again, north part of the county, south part of the county, it's, it's different areas and it's different soils, so it just, that's the tough part about, I, I think, the, the conservation practices in the field is, is they're just different depending on where you are. And there's no specific or exact science to it, and so.
Well, last year Luke was always gonna farm himself a knee, Sheriff Township. Alan's brother Andy.
Yep.
And they put the cover crap out and they got in there real late, combining beans. The cover crap was all about this high. So when they were combining it, all that cover crap was plugging the sieves and beans were going right out the ass of the combine. It wasn't working too well.
No, that's what he said. That didn't work so well on that field in particular.
They were trying everything and they were having a heck of a time.
You know, and that's, that's kind of the hard part, is, is getting people into it, and it's just not tried and true in every field like standard tillage is, so. So that's been the difficulty, but again, it is growing and.
Trouble, most of it, a lot of them want it seeded after they're done combining, and it's so short.
It is. Yeah, it is.
But if you go south of twenty, you got another two weeks.
It makes all the difference in the world.
Makes all the difference in the world on your cover crop.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does, so. And again, dry, wet, just depends on the year, you know, how well it does and how well it performs. And strip till seems to be gaining more momentum, so.
Yeah, I think so.
So you, you're still tilling, you know, which, which keeps that practice going.
You see a lot more drilled beans, instead of cornstalks. Leonard's got a rig and Kevy, Kev from the Vern goes up, custom does it. You see a lot of that, they drill at an angle and you can combine straight or at a different angle, and it's.
It's funny, you know, twenty years ago, everybody was drilling beans by me.
Now they don't.
Not nobody is.
Yeah, it, it came and went.
Yeah, it came and went where all the guys around me, they just quit. The white mole got them. Yeah, to get away here, up close there, it, it just got them.
Yeah, and combine in any direction you felt like, you know, you still can, more or less, but. That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Luke. Thank you, Luke.
Thank you. Appreciate your consideration.
Yep, thanks, Luke. Yep, thanks, Luke. Anything else to come before the good of the Sioux County today?
No, sir.
Here, does anyone have a motion to adjourn? Got a motion, I was like, I'm on favor, say aye. We're adjourned.